Okay, nine o'clock, call meeting to order. The rise of the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You can swear in. Our new council member.
John, I want to stop right here. And I'm going to recite this, I just want you to repeat after me. Okay, so raise your right hand, and I'll also, I promise I won't make a painful on you, okay? Okay. I, Donald Johnson, do solemnly swear to support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the state of Minnesota, and I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of counselor of the city of Black Duck, Minnesota, to the best of my judgment and ability to help me God, to help me God. Congratulations.
One word, uh, thank you. You got roll, Christina?
I do.
I get the approval of the agenda, please.
All approved, agenda. Second motion.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, passes. Number four on the list, Mr. John Eggers.
Mr. Mayor, thank you very much, and Councilman, and Christina. Is this the former bank building?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
I want to reminisce just a little bit. My father worked in the bank, and so did, and so did all his wife. And in 1950s, the bank was robbed, and the robber put him inside the vault and closed the door. My father knew how to get out, and so was a suffolkian, whenever I see a vault like that, I think of that bank robbery back in 1950s. What hasn't changed since that time, by the way, is the dropout rate in our schools. And we're really dealing well with the pandemic, we're doing well. But we still have this epidemic of dropouts that's occurred in schools for decades and decades and decades. And I've been in education for 55 years, and we haven't solved the problem. I think this is the second or third time I've appeared before the Black Duck City Council, so I appreciate your support. The only way this is going to be solved is total community engagement, and that's why we have project graduate. We appreciate all you can do for this. Now, the graduation rate in Black, I guess, isn't too bad, it's 85%, which is about what it is in in Minnesota, 85% graduation rate. At Beltrami County, where the graduation rate is about 65%. So we have a long ways to go to improve that. And I truly believe, again, that this, the only way it will prove is that the total community gets behind and helps the schools with that endeavor. One of the things I always ask whenever I do anything, is I ask, well, why, you know, why the effort to have a 100% graduation rate? And why is that such a critical issue? We don't, and we've all survived, retired, and we've done very good with low graduation rates. And so I just, I got this little quiz for you here. You can take some time. I just want to read a couple of things off if I may. And here are some of the things. Are young people who do not have their high school diploma more likely or less likely, for example, be incarcerated? Well, the answer to that is they're more likely to be incarcerated without a high school diploma. Are they more likely or less likely to live in poverty? Are they more likely to live in poverty than those who have high school diplomas? Are they more likely to use drugs without a high school diploma? They're more likely. And are they more likely to vote? Or less likely to vote without a high school diploma? And they're more likely to vote with a high school diploma. So those are some reasons why, and we can go on and on, we could make it less well into the hundreds if we really wanted to. So by having the 100% graduation rate would cure, not eliminate, but certainly help reduce a lot of the social issues that we face today, and truly would. And so that's why we have this endeavor, the initiative. Well, it seems like it's almost an impossibility to have a 100% graduation rate. But it really isn't when you think about the fact that all of you graduated by someone putting in your brain that you needed to graduate from high school. And that thing caused the same thing, it was done by your parents, your grandparents, uncle, whoever. But you probably didn't think of anything but not graduate from high school, it was always there for you. And, and so you graduated. So this is what we're trying to do in the downtown economy. We're trying to put in the minds of our youth the mindset to graduate from high school. And to do that, it takes everybody's involvement. Everybody has to remind kids to graduate, and it's really that simple. It truly is that simple. If we can all remember to wear a face mask and keep self-disability within a matter of three or four months, you certainly can help kids figure into their mind that they need to graduate from high school, if everybody gets behind it. Now, I've always asked you for your support, and I always appreciate that. This time, I'm going to ask you to do something maybe a little bit differently, unless I gave you a Santa proclamation. I've been, I always present, of course, to all the city councils in the county, and our three weeks ago or so, I visited the Division City Council again. And what they're going to do is that they're going to sign a proclamation on May 29th, which is the date of the graduation in Virginia, that supports all kids graduating, but also reinforces the idea that we need to remind all of our kids to graduate. If Black Duck could do the same thing, that would be terrific. And I just thought of some words here that you might want to use in that proclamation. And I'm doing the same thing with all the city councils in the county. From failure to North, which is not in our county, but we do have kids going to Red Lake schools, or Red Lake has kids going to Parkland schools, Clearwood and Gombe, and Virginia. And so if they would all do that, that would really send a message, just a one little reminder to parents, again, to remind their kids to graduate. So all those things put together, being a poster in a business, you know, just as an out there to help parents remember to remind their kids to graduate. All those little things help. So if you want to consider doing that, Mr. Mayor, I appreciate it. And the proclamation. Anyway, if you have any tough questions for me, I'd be glad to answer them. Answer them all. Anybody here have a business in town that needs a closure appeal? Everyone up here has a business?
Most everybody that's here is either staff or the presenting, so you can leave some.
All right.
I can definitely handle them.
Thanks, thanks.
You will.
Appreciate it, yeah. And when you do that, you might want to just contact the press and give a little photo op for you.
Do that.
All right, thanks.
Thank you, John.
Definitely do.
Would you want to set a date for that?
Well, we meet on the 24th next, so when is Black Duck graduating?
June 4th. Right on.
Okay. Well, the city council's next meeting is June 7th, so if you wanted to do it at that point, you could, or if you wanted to do it at any time, you can. But it's not needed to have an actual board meeting to and have a proclamation.
All right, we're going good. I'm Jennifer.
Okay.
On to our next, our financial audit report.
Mr. Mayor, my name is Councilor Christina. Nice to be here today. My name is John Roscoe. I'm with North Carolina, in Virginia, Minnesota. We did the 2020 financial statement. So hopefully, you should have three separate documents, or the electronic version. There's the full audit report, long copy. There's a letter to the council. And also, there's a handout that runs a little bit easier to see as a summary format. First, I want to just kind of touch base, overview of the audit. You know, the financial statements, you get an opinion on the overall financial statements, and states that it's materially correct in all respects. And so you receive an unmodified opinion, which stated that, so that's the good news. Just a kind of a reference, materiality wise, is each column kind of your financial statements, your general fund, your water fund, your liquor fund, all have a separate opinion essential. And materiality as well, so the general fund is $16,000. The liquor fund is $21,000, water is $26,000, just kind of as a reference. City as a whole ends up being $40,000 on the governmental funds, and enterprise as a whole, $43,000. For reference, when we're looking at financial statements, we're looking at more of the big picture. We do some transactional basis, but it's on the larger numbers on, you know, in a whole. So in addition to the financial statement audit, we also have two other letters that are, we have to kind of note on. And one of them is Minnesota legal compliance, the state auditor has select statutes that they have us review. I have to report that the word of findings associated with those statutes, the city has been compliant with all those. And the other one is, we don't do an audit of internal controls, but we do have to evaluate them. We use them in our understanding of the overall audit process. So if there's something comes up during the audit, we do need to report those to the city council, and they also, you know, they go in the audit reports. The two that you've had for the last few years, segregation of duties and financial statements preparation, were in the audit event this year. Would like to note, too, there, there's two levels of those findings. One's a significant deficiency, and one's a material weakness. Both of the findings that you've been getting are continuing to be only significant deficiencies below of the two thresholds. But you do have good made game controls. However, just the size of the admin staff as a whole, it's very hard. It's not cost effective, truly, of all segregation duties, as well as financial statement preparation. There are things that are in the audit report that really don't affect your operations. So, you know, that's very common for cities your size to have that finding, because neither same thing, not cost effective. They don't, my mind, don't have any issues with the overall operational, the financial rest of the act. In addition, we had, we did have a couple items, just to kind of comment on it. We didn't feel they rose to a level of a reportable item in the written documentation that we just discussed, journal entries, just to kind of help with that presentation of the the support, there's no real overall concern, it's more of a transitional area that could improve, but nothing overall concern. And then the other item was inventory at, at the liquor store. Just kind of recommend maybe doing it more than one, you know, just a increased periodic timetable of random counts and things, so if something ever comes up, it reduces your gap when you have to, a time period that you have to look in to resolve an issue. That's what happens sometimes, the longer that time period, the harder it is to really resolve what is up. So for the overall finances of the city, you're sitting in a very you know, cash flow, you've got the cash by fund report. I guess it's, just to kind of a, just to summarize your, the results of the year. So on page one is just a cash by fund, you can see on the bottom, overall cash increased during the year. You know, there was kind of, has been steady inclines each year over the past five years, other than in 2019, the slight dip, but that was for an extra debt payment. That's we kind of take a look more in depth on page two. Look at the general fund. You know, a slight increase in cash, which on the graph, you can see that your expenses have been rising, and they've been exceeding your revenue the last couple of years, and for the last five. You have had cash increases, although that's because of the transfer in from the liquor store, and also some other financing arrangements. Your capital lease purchase this year, the cost gets in that, that green line of expenditures, but the source of the funds is actually not presented in revenue. So from a cash standpoint, it was cash neutral, it was a wash of zero, because you're going to end up, you receive the fund, and you will end up having to repay those obviously back on that capital lease. But from, on the graph standpoint, kind of, it shows up.
An example of that, the council is that we did last year. That was a huge in and out.
Right. So that's the reason why your expenses are showing greater revenue, but you still end up with a cash, cash positive. On to page three, we just kind of wanted to hit on some of the enterprise funds. You know, so the water fund has been maintaining just a nice little positive increase on cash flow for the reserves. Operating costs have been maintaining, there's that dip, the non-operating, those are typically your unusual items. You had some debt in the past, and some grants in the special assessments. Echo, which, so those aren't really typically for an operating type cost, that's why they are separate. So on page four, sewer has been, you know, very, run very similar to the water fund. Now, the, this year you had the rate increases starting in 2020, but you saw the revenue kind of match up with the expenses now, versus low deficits from prior years. On page number five is the golf course. So the cash deficit essentially in borrow was kind of flattened out a little bit with the increase in revenue on the year, but it was still a deficit. I know that's, I guess, it really, but other than that, there really wasn't a lot of changes, you know, I Black Duck, I think, is the only golf course I work with that has, you know, it's in its own enterprise fund. You know, a lot of them you do see inside the park, in wrecked apartments, governmental, you know, just kind of the other parky areas that don't necessarily make money either. A reference point. So it's, it is actually hard to compare when you're looking at other municipalities, whether or not their, how their golf courses are doing, because they're very
And in most cases, correct me if I'm wrong, parks and rucks can just vary. Very doesn't seem like the right term.
Yeah, it's just, yeah.
But they could be, they could be covered within the general fund due in part to its, its, its nature, correct?
Correct, yeah. So, yeah, I say the park, so it'd be no different than your than the other park costs underneath the general fund. So just apartment that the city wants as a, that provides a benefit to the city as a whole. So on page six, the liquor store revenue did continue to grow this year. There's a, that gross profit percentage line, you know, dropped down to 36.7%. That's just because of the increase in off sale versus your on sale. So that's why, even though you have the increase in revenue, you can quite see the, the net cash fluctuation because of it.
It was generally all open.
Yeah.
Bar wasn't open for four and a half months. It was on the bar rate. So, and you make most of our profit on that side.
Well, that's, yeah, that's, unfortunately, it's common. And then also, you did do a lot more repairs and upgrades and maintenance on the sidewalk that was down, so then that obviously is in your, your net cash flow as well. On page number seven, it's kind of just a your overall remaining fund balances in your main fund, your general fund, your enterprise funds. So your, your fund balance is kind of not only your cash, but you're also your additional receivable, as less your current liabilities. And so it's kind of what you have remained for future operating costs. And so the state kind of is a three to five is a nice range for your kind of size of city, where you're being in another month of expenditures. And you can see, other than the golf course, you're, you're sitting with healthy fund balances in those individual funds to cover your current operations. And water and sewer, it's not unusual to see higher numbers of 24 and 20 months' worth of costs because of the large, the nature of repairs and improvements that, that come up. So that's not uncommon, to see a, a larger balance as well. So I ended include also the top three the funds that make up that other governmental funds. Also, the reason why that one's sitting at 119 is because you have a lot of reserve accounts in there, so they don't have a lot, they didn't have a lot of cost this last year. So your revolving loan fund, your fire hall maintenance, your petrol care fund for the cemetery. And so you have cash reserves in there, not a lot of operating costs, so that's why your, your number of months within your fund balances is high. If, I think I actually presented this thing last year as well. So if you, if you compare, you would also see that the water maintenance and sewer maintenance are not included in that other governmental funds. That was something that's, we kind of discussed in the past, and kind of pleaded this year is, those reserve funds are included in your water fund and your sewer fund now, so you have a a whole, so when you're looking at those cash balances, that's everything that is, the city has set aside for those operations.
But as a, as a city, you're keeping in reserves, it's just reporting to the state. We've grouped those cash, those cash balances together as we report to the state, correct?
Correct, it is only in the final presentation. There's no change in your current operations and the current reports that you will see will all be the same. They'll be just a, just that way you can see what your total, so when you're looking at what you have in reserve for operations, because you can pull that money back out. That was a council decision, so you have the ability to move those funds back from the reserve side into the operating side, so that's why they get presented from a financial statements.
Guys, have any questions for John on this report?
The third document, there's a letter to the council. This is a standard letter required with all audits. Kind of a lot of kind of canned language, just describing a little bit of the audit process and what occurs during the year. I guess I'd like to, or page two. So on the bottom, kind of the middle towards the bottom, there, there's the corrected and uncorrected in this statement. So as far as during the audit, you, we did recommend certain audit adjustments be made to the financial statements, to go from kind of your operating that operating purposes, what you use to make decisions essentially, to what is required in the financial statements. And so we're required to include all adjustments that exceeded materiality, those kind of little, I talked about before, about 16,000, 20,000, you know, range. And so there are a few on here, but most of them are, they are basically just related to the difference between operating and non-operating reporting purposes. So for example, the first one was the non-cash activity for the capital lease, and that's what we talked about, where it gets recorded as an expense, and then a rev, and a non-revenue, a non-operating revenue difference in the general fund. And so really, there was no cash activity for the city, so a lot of times that doesn't get reported, and that's very common. But I just wanted to, and going kind of down the line, as you look at them, revolving loan funds, the debt payments for the enterprise funds are for internal reporting purposes. So I just kind of wanted to make sure you're aware that there wasn't an overall concern when you see a list of material audit adjustments. These are adjustments that are due to what's required in financial reporting, versus what we work on basically from a city operational standpoint, and are very common in most of our On the last piece, I know, though, especially with a new council member, when you look into financial statements, if you're going to see a, both a net pension asset and a net pension liability, a couple hundred thousand dollars on the asset, that's from the Fire Relief Association, and it's for reporting purposes, you're required to include it. But you don't have any assets for the cities, there's no, there's no, nothing there. Good news is the liability, that's 527,000 dollars. There is no liability to the city as well. That is just your portion of the overall pension pool. The only thing to be is also if that number starts climbing, what ends up happening is your employer contribution would increase, it would start covering that debt. But, you know, unfortunately, there's a lot of pages in here about pension, and really, you have zero control over, and you don't have any cash output, you just continue to make your employer contribution.
And I don't believe the city and the top shops have had any contributions really in as long as I've been here, maybe early 17, maybe 16, there was one.
Yeah. And that's even going to be when they get your SC forms to look at for that contribution. The number you're going to see on there is actually different than what you're seeing on the financial statements as well, because this has to come from an actuary. And that's the SC form is from a state statute, so if you're wondering why, or if you're trying to wonder why, it was nothing 200,000 dollars, that form unfortunately, numbers that are required that somebody else uses, but
Yeah, it's money that is there, but it's not there.
Yeah.
Yes.
So, yeah, so don't wonder if you want to ask, why, can we spend this?
No.
No, unfortunately. But you don't have to check for the liability, so we'll take that wash, I guess.
Just file it away.
Anybody have any questions?
No, I don't.
Something does come up, that's my involvement. If you have something, feel free to contact me, I'll be able to answer it. So, just want to thank Christine and the rest of the staff, to really appreciate our staff enjoys working with the city.
I actually want other municipalities that do inventory at the liquor store, like, like we do, how often are they doing it?
I, kind of, it does depend on the size and how often, if you were having errors. I mean, so I wouldn't have a big concern, a lot of times quarterly. But what they'll do is they'll do select, right?
Like spot checks.
Spot check, just going to do a beer, or either buy beer or buy a specific vendor, and usually quarterly then, and just pick a day, and you just do a quick spot check here and there. The full inventory typically is only done at the end of the year, but periodic spot checks, so probably getting at least three times a year, we want to be hitting, not including the year end, but then doing something at least quarterly.
So when you say error, can you define an error? Because I think the liquor store is less than 1%.
They're, they're sure, it's been very good.
Yeah, I should, I should say variance, but doesn't necessarily mean an error. So a variance would be just when they, they're doing the count, and the system says 20, there's 18 on hand, sometimes there's 22 on hand, and it can be a variety of different things. You know, sometimes it's just because they get swapped out, you know, the beer swaps happen when you're transitioning from off sale to on sale. Sometimes, you know, a bottle gets missed at that point, so the periodic count, or the more doing it more routinely, I guess, that if you, if you have the one, you're like, oh, yeah, I don't have to look for a month and a half, find where that was, and you can find it easier. Versus, it happens in February, and you find out there's a two bottle difference in December, it's harder.
Understood. Anything else?
No, that was all I had.
Are you ready? Thank you for your ready meeting.
Motion to adjourn the consent agenda.
A motion in a second. All items will be approved, or someone wants to remove an item for further discussion. All was in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, there none? Passes. Ready for the forum? On to the personal committee recommendation.
I think I can take the lead on this, Max.
Thank you.
Although not present to the meeting, I reviewed the meeting in the minutes. The meeting for the minutes, and my takeaway was that the personal committee approved. The, moving forward with the changing the lead bartender to a full-time benefited position. So that would be action item A for the council. The second thing that was requested was that the full-time. Lead bartender position would change, and I've noted that in item E underneath that recommendation highlighted. Starting with step one at twelve seventy-three. And then action item three, that's for consideration and discussion tonight, is the discussion on taking the golf course wages for seasonal employees, which is at the bottom of that same. Wage scale for clerk and. It's called maintenance workers, basically, or your dream keepers, to consider increasing those steps. Of which I do not have any recommendation for, because that was not discussed. So you have two things that are definitely a request to have action on and consideration. Did I summarize that right, you guys? For those of you that were present?
I want to take A and B. Right off the top. You guys read the job description?
Yeah, all the advice that was given to get into that committee was taken in heart and transferred over to the job description. I'm in favor of it.
We get a motion then to?
Well, you gentlemen get a chance to.
I agree with you.
Well, then I will make a motion to approve the full-time bartender position with benefits and the full-time, I'm sorry. Yeah, the full-time bartender wage scale.
We could do it.
We do A, B together.
Absolutely.
I hope so. It's the same title, position.
I have a motion, do I have a second? One second, the, any further discussion on topic?
I do have a discussion on the topic. I know that the city is gonna be moving forwards a lot more full-time positions, we need to start looking into keeping it at a hundred percent. Paid benefits for non-management positions. Just for your reference.
Anything else?
I have none.
I have to what you mean by that?
Oh, we, one of the benefit packages for a full-time position is we give them full coverage, or is it full coverage?
It's health insurance premium, dental premium, and HSA contribution and a living life insurance.
All paid by the city. And I just made a comment saying that we're gonna be hiring a lot more full-time employees, that we should drop it down from ninety or eighty, eighty-twenty or ninety-ten for non-management positions.
Are the only way you're gonna get people off?
Yeah.
Need help with retention?
Yeah.
Keep them longer, you know?
I get it.
Yeah, you gotta give them something.
Like I said, I get it, it's just. It's another bill that's on top of the, the normal hourly wage that we pay people. Yeah, you're right, it's we pay people higher wages, or we give people the full benefits. They'd like to sit.
But you keep people longer.
Usually. Or leave it?
So, let me just make sure I heard you correctly, Jason, your recommendation is to only pay a hundred percent of the benefits to those that are management positions?
Recommendation further down the road, not current, just to look into it.
Okay.
Because I know we're gonna be hiring a lot more full-time employees. Just a concern.
Okay, alright.
We're good? Anything else? Then all who's in favor?
I.
I. Ours, there none, passes. Now for the golf course.
Oh, I wasn't there, but I heard a lot of discussion on the recording in regards to the struggle to hire. Which appears to be the struggle across the board, just about anywhere you go, whether the position is full-time, part-time or not. So. One of the concerns that I believe was brought up was that we hire too low for seasonal positions, and we can't attract staff to even apply because of that. That sounds about right?
Over to me.
So there was, there was no numbers discussed, was there?
No, I think the, there's an arbitrary twelve bucks an hour and. What would this do if it gets much? But, I mean, there obviously it's. Well, there's now, or under, everywhere, under everything else.
You mean, when you say everything else, are you talking about our existing wage scales?
The existing wage scale, though. You know. Ten bucks an hour versus. As low as twelve.
Oh, so you say everywhere else, you mean on our current wage scale?
On our current wage scale.
Do you want us to mimic somebody's?
I don't. I, you mean, by somebody, you mean another golf course?
No, another step wage increase or golf course, yeah, I guess you can go there.
Well, I was gonna say that I don't think we can mimic any other golf course, because we have to do what's right for our course. But raising these rates, raising the wages is gonna require raising the rates. Because I don't see any other way to pay for it.
So. If that ends up being the case at this point, the only thing that would be. Reflective on this year's revenue would be if these rental and those base types of walk-on traffic revenue were increased. Because the majority of all your memberships are already paid. So you're not gonna be able to go back and ask for more money from them, that's impossible, obviously. What will get people to apply for this job?
And the concern of keeping the people we have. That are out there now, for that, Jim, I'm gonna ask you, what? You, how much is Justin making? How much are you gonna settle wage?
I think the average, you could say is what, twelve fifty would be a good starting average?
I would think so.
And that would be based on no experience?
Yeah, when you consider kids' molds right now, fifteen, yeah.
So where do we want to put the green seeds?
We already raised two dollars this year? So how does that work? Figure out how many employees we want at the wage that we are going to currently request to figure out how much the rates are gonna increase?
I would have to do some calculations to find out how much the. How much the entity has already budgeted for wages this year, and how much that's going to increase that budget, a spike, a spike era. And then try to. Hold the revenue in to compensate for it. And right now, the way things are set, the way I have the budget set now, it's just breaking even. Assuming, assuming the revenue that I have estimated is going to come in this year.
And dollar ring?
Yes, well, and I shouldn't completely say that. Jason, when I help the departments work their payroll budgets, I base it off of existing employees' wages. The number of hours and days they work. Anticipating return employees and make a calculation based upon that.
So if I'm hearing you correctly, you use last year's budget?
Yes.
And the hours and the employees that were working last year?
That is correct.
And we are how many employees short this year from last year? So technically, we should have enough to hire two people at a higher cost.
I would say theoretically you could do that, but then what they're gonna end up, the department's gonna end up doing is they're gonna be working with less people at a higher wage. And my question and concern to the department is, can you do the same for less, with less people for the same amount, or for more?
On the, on the ground, you mean?
Sure, let's just talk about the grounds.
On the ground themselves?
Last year you had five people working.
I need one more, which could still be one less than last year.
Four out of five. How many hours on an average do the other four work, thirty-two?
Thirty-two.
Thirty-two extra hours, and a lower cost per week. Theoretically, you could raise it without raising rates.
You would have to take your existing staff and, and bring them back up to what you would match that up to. I mean, it's not a complete science.
Right, no, I understand, I mean, there's gonna be a give and take.
I mean, if you want, we could leave. Leave the clubhouse where it's at. Like if you're gonna hire new people in the clubhouse, that, out on the grounds where.
Needs work. And so, I mean, I totally missed the whole conversation for the golf course, so I'm gonna. I mean, I, I read the minutes, but still missed a lot of the conversation, so. I mean, I'll just go out on a limb and say I'm, I'm for the increase.
Long story short, is they basically do not want to give an increase. I'm all that.
I get it. Okay.
Because the reasoning for it is, why are we going to put more in for something that's already, it's already losing?
Yeah, well, I get it.
But you also have to take a, a little bit of a. Stance of where do you wanna see it go?
That's why if, I, I guess I'm asking is if Jim can hold off with four employees instead of having five, I mean, we might get away with a smaller increase with pay raises. To kind of keep people coming back and, you know, repetition, repetition, you're gonna get better at what you do anyways.
Nick, Tom, boss?
Kind of a, education. Raise rates?
I don't.
Well, and it's a slippery slope, because you've got, you've got other part-time employees throughout the city, they're not working. Seasonal, they've been working the whole year, and they're making, they would be making less entry level than somebody working entry level in a seasonal. So how do you explain that as well?
It can apply for the golf course positions.
That would, you can't do that. I mean, that should be incorporated in, like, if they're mowing grass at the cemetery and they're mowing grass at the golf course, you could, you could save a lot of money.
No, one takes way more delicate care versus the other.
Well, what I, but what I'm saying, if you work for the city, you work for the city on the golf course, or you work for the city mowing grass?
I think that's where John was talking about, the, the two entities being on the one. Yeah, you don't wanna be paying that.
Now, if they start talking to each other and go, one goes, hey, I'm making seasonal, I'm making fifteen over here, and I'm full-timer for the city, I'm gonna make twelve fifty.
Yeah, and at that point, it's also.
Seasonal, we're.
Seasonal, yeah. But I'm getting unemployment if I get paid off over here for the city, I mean, or whatever, you know, if I get a little more benefit. No, it's like this here, and it's, yeah.
Okay, so my question to the group, and maybe the, the people that were here from the personal committee can chime in, is were there any incentives discussed? Because I know.
I know there was for the pond.
Shonda brought up incentives, and that was, that was fine. I mean, as it sits right now, our employees that work at the golf course don't have to pay green fees if they wanna golf, if they're golfers. As long as they fulfill everything and it doesn't conflict with their, their hours, they can golf around. If they wanna car, they have to pay a car, but we allow them to golf for free, so that incentive's already there. The problem that we, that I have observed in the past is there's only been a couple of people that have worked for Jim basically on the grounds that enjoy golfing, and will do that. Most everybody else is not looking for that type of incentive. So is there something else we can provide to these seasonal employees to get them to apply that is not going to hurt the wages? Was anything else brought up?
Just the fact that school kids are, those school kids, and when college starts up again in the fall, they're gone, I mean, end of August, that's it. And you're back to square one, in the fall, especially. And that's where we're at right now, with the pay box that's out there. For people to go out, they can go in golf, they can walk, they can get a cart during the week. Because we have nobody out there.
Which is working, but it's not ideal to run a business that way. Well, you don't go to the bank and have a bell there to ring when you need to have the deposit made, right?
No, you should do it to the ATM.
I think the big take, the big takeaway at the meeting is every place is waiting for help. No one can get people to work there, but, I mean, anyway, there's too much money to get thrown around right now, and no one wants to work, they'd rather not work. I can't find people working my department, gotta do what, gotta do, and that's the decision you gotta make. They're gonna raise wages on, I think if you raise a lot, start raising those wages as a seasonal part-time position, you're gonna have a lot of. Physicians looking for reasons. And just because you can't get maybe someone to work there, I don't know, just throw more money at it, I can't get anyone work for my department. And nor can other law enforcement agencies, but I'm, we're doing the best we can and trying to get creative, but. I don't know, you guys, the city could pay enough to get people to wanna do some of these jobs right now with what's going on in, for multiple reasons in different areas.
It doesn't matter where you go, it's, it's everywhere, and it's, and it's national.
Well, some state cut off all the unemployment, I heard, they shut the unemployment off, because, you know, everybody gets unemployment. And that way the labor force will come back, right? That's a big, a big thing right now. People are gonna be making more on unemployment, working part-time or not working, then why work?
What's your solution, Jim?
They're not gonna hire anybody. Lock her up. You're not gonna be able to survive what you're doing right now. There's a good example, this today, as nice as it was, five people on that golf course.
There's a good example, this today, as nice as it was, five people on that golf course. Three were members, we had two others that weren't, we didn't hire today, but then I was there. And I was in total, what, one of six? All last week, not counting money, because money is a drain. All last week, up until Friday afternoon, had thirteen people play on that golf course.
Took in a hundred and forty-eight dollars in green fees between Tuesday and Friday. In that pay box.
And it's usually, how much a week?
Well, that was just the three days.
Oh, the three days. I, just, just throwing a number on it, good to have you staying.
I mean, if, if somebody was in the clubhouse, that's what would've got, would bring more in?
How?
Yeah, that's.
That's, it wouldn't.
It wouldn't. You can't, you can't force them to come to the course. Having somebody in there doesn't necessarily give you more money. They still have to come and golf. So if we took in, like, ten rounds of green, ten green fees rounds, some nine, some eighteen holes in those three days, with the clubhouse nap being open?
Right. You might have selected a seasonal, a hundred or so.
Maybe a hundred because of the cart rental and a little more money for maybe some beverages. You could have maybe doubled that. Possibly.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So.
Well, it's just like Friday afternoon. There was two people came, they put their money in an envelope and walked. Two other people came, they read the sign right there in front of us. And they said, no, we're not walking. They said, right there in front of us, Old Castle, I have these left.
Yeah, I was there for that.
But raising the wages is not going to change that.
Right, until what, uh, we get a clubhouse or regardless of?
Yeah, if you, we've got to do something, some kind of an incentive, raise wages, whatever it takes to get people in that clubhouse, it's after.
What, right, that's, that's what we're discussing, is will the clubhouse make more money for the golf course?
Yes, it would. It seems like every time I walk, I don't know if it's every time, but when I walk by the clubhouse or whatever, you can hear the phone ringing. Now, that might be somebody wanting to, you know, what do you call it? Not, not apply for a job, but they're calling in, people are tee time or whatever.
There were the extended ones.
Yeah, they couldn't, yeah.
All right, Jim, I guess my question to you is, is where are you comfortable at? You wanna hire more people at a higher rate and raise the rates, or do you feel comfortable that you just wanna shut it down?
I sure as hell don't wanna shut it down. It would be a terrible loss to say you can do that.
Yeah, once you shut it down, the greens go, they go bad real quick.
Let me know how many members are, have a membership right now there?
Fifty-three.
Fifty-three?
Ten more than last year. What do they pay for the whole year, for season? Uh, depends on what kind of membership they are. Uh, a individual is four hundred and fifty dollars, highlights two hundred and fifty dollars, so there's a mixed bag.
And couples was six.
Six, and five, I think, for a married couple, a couple, maybe for carts? Four fifty if they buy a seasonal rental.
Oh, I mean, just a seasonal doesn't pay, I mean, doesn't pay your wages for the guys that mow the yard, I mean. But it's keeping the doors open, barely.
They, when, when they buy those seasonal memberships, you're basically, if you golf every day for a month, you pay for it.
Yeah.
It's paid for.
Not even more. Sometimes it's less.
Yeah.
The brass taxes at all is how much have we actually made from memberships? Those are the numbers that I just heard thrown around. The golf course made a hundred and fifty dollars in three days. It costs at ten dollars an hour to have three guys out there, seven hundred and twenty dollars a day. So take fifty off the top of that, that's how much we've lost, in my opinion, that day. You're gonna add more guys, add more money, and lose even more. Adding someone to the clubhouse is.
Yeah.
Yet another expense, another hourly wage. That's, that's just wages, that's not everything else that goes with it. You had one guy out onto the grounds crew and hire at twelve fifty, and then move everyone else up to the twelve fifty. You're looking at ten thousand dollars more this year alone, just in pay. And, and with the revenue or the benefits to them, like Christina said, you have to pay into.
With those two, you also have a high school golf team. I know that we don't make money off of that either, but that is another thing to consider.
Yeah, a red lake golf team.
I mean, they'll have tournaments here for the kids, so, so, there's other things that the golf course does, but. When it comes down to this, what I wanted this to be on the agenda for was, it was my opinion that the personnel committee's recommendation is to do no increase for the golf course. And what I was saying is, I want it on there, that way, everybody's gonna be held accountable by vote. It's not just one person making a decision or one, it comes from the council. The city, we're the ones that ultimately have SA, I didn't want it, and I consent to that.
Maybe you wanna take the, the power away from your, your committee and put the power out of council.
Yeah.
The committee has no power, it's just a recommendation.
Yeah, and, and it was, I think, and I may be speaking wrong, but I hear the committee is saying, don't do it, but also, you guys are sitting in a tough spot now. I think you either gotta pay somebody to keep the greens going and fix it up, and so you can either sell it or lease it or do whatever, or you're gonna shut it down. Because it's gonna go to heck if it's not being paid by her, but then you guys gotta make that decision on what you wanna do with it.
You can't let it go, you can't let it go, but it's.
We now. No choice.
It's a money pit.
The city doesn't have to change the.
It's like buying a boat, it's a money pit.
It can keep the existing wage scale that has, it's already in place. And just agree that step one is not ten away, but if we're gonna hire somebody off, you know.
You gotta have the numbers crunched.
So can't do a rate study, because I know we're way above everybody else. Just gonna have to do a study on, figure out, uh, what we could hire an experienced groundskeeper versus an inexperienced groundskeeper. He still keep the wages at ten, but give Jim the authority to say, hey, you know, this guy's had six years, we should give him more than that. You know, at a golf course, like, we did last, last meeting. All right, are the other two employees? Or do we not authorize that?
It's good.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, fine.
Right now, I'm more concerned with clubhouse than I am my people on the ground.
Right.
My biggest concern right now is getting clubhouse staff and get that course open.
Fully, hundred percent, yeah.
Because I'm saying right now, there's nothing but every day is a loss.
Right, no, I, I totally understand, uh.
I am going to see my way out of this vote. My daughter applied at the golf course, so I'm not going to be voting.
See how you are.
All you gotta do is apply, by yourself.
I know, I know, I'm thinking.
I was thinking about going for the, uh, uh.
As long as we're not a full-time member or.
Now, you said yes to this job.
So, so what's the issue? Do we hire, uh, somebody to replace Pam, or we hire somebody, tell Pam gets here, or, I mean, how, how do we do it? I mean, we put out ads, we, we've got it.
We have no stare to be met, we, we're just doing.
Just Pam's day.
I mean, that's, I mean.
Yeah, from repeat, from previous years.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Not, not that I have.
Yeah, nobody's. I don't know, uh, when's our busy, busy season?
Can one, uh, September?
It could start this week.
No, I.
Soon as temperatures go up.
Anytime, anytime after Walleye opener and Memorial Weekend, as soon as that main first holiday of summer starts. We're busy until basically after Labor Day.
Doesn't Pam start shortly here, as soon as schools open?
Yeah.
So by the time you hire, back around somebody, you're in the vote right here. Regardless. No matter what you do. I would move.
Keep the wage scale where it's at, and then come back next month and see what's up. See where, where it's going with, uh, study. See, or not even worry about the study.
Well, we're gonna have to worry about, are you gonna be able to have, like, a forecast for us?
I will do my best, I will, yes, I will do my best to get you guys as best forecast as possible, yes. I mean, without, without putting names to wages, I will provide you with the existing budget that I provided for this year, and we can forecast out if we.
I know. Yeah, because.
I, I got you.
Yes.
All right, then, I would make that motion.
All right, I, I motion to, uh, keep the scale where it's at and circle back next month.
Motion and second. All those in favor? Mike?
Mike Aaron, you got good news, right? Um, well?
Yeah, you do.
Yeah, really, I figured it would. So after we talked last time, um, our, our bite price was around eleven thousand dollars or so, I think. We were really kind of struggling to figure out what we were gonna do. In the last hour, basically today, I got an email from Lanning, going over really what he would like to see done. Of course, they would really like to see it all done, I would like to see it, great versus, we can't afford it. The next tier down of what he would like to see done now would cost us, from my calculations of the footage, about nineteen hundred dollars. And the absolute minimum would be about nine hundred and eighty dollars. With that said, I do have money in our sewer budget, and I've basically elected, just, you know, I'm gonna go ahead and do it.
How do we go from eleven thousand to nineteen hundred?
That's, it was, when I was like, whoa, whoa, there's no, there's no other step?
I'm assuming it's a specific section.
What we're doing is sections that, one, I have knowledge, have been in problems since I've been here in just two years. You can go somewhat off of when we believe certain areas were put in, how the ground has shifted in those areas, has problems. We're really honing in to a couple areas and hoping that what we look at for footage will give us a good overview of the rest, so to speak, you know, we're, we're gonna kind of fuck some footage out, look at it, and hope that the remainder footage in that area is very similar to what we're looking at. Follow me?
Yeah, thank you.
So that's where that sits, just to let everyone know. That lets us move forward with the overall project, gets them in a, in a better position. But just, just to let you know, just so that you're aware, if we were to go through and replace all the VCP and the undersized watering without ever cambering, if you just said, yep, it's junk, we're gonna dig it up, we're gonna replace it, we'd be looking at about four point three million dollars. If we televise, then they've got a number here of about two point nine. So replacing all the VCP without televising would be two point nine. If we're confident that the VCP is in good shape and we're able to reline it, seven hundred and four dollars. So this is why the cambering is so important. You know, go from four point three to down to about seven hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah.
That's a huge difference. And we're talking spending two thousand dollars to camera at this point.
Is this something we're gonna be able to budget for?
It's something that I will work on, knowing where all of our stuff lies now with age and the deterioration of it and what we're trying to do. It is something that I will, instead of having such a broad umbrella under my apartment, I can try to, um, set aside some just for town, if that's reasonable with that. Um, it's no different than the cleaning that we're talking about. I'm going to possibly move ahead with some of that. It's televising, try to clean in order to see it. There again, with the ten thousand dollar amount that I have for repairs and maintenance under this, you know, generally, sometimes that's nice to have, just in case. But we're at a point where I need to use it, obviously, we've shrunk budgets this year. So that's what I'm going to go ahead and do, I'm gonna fix that or fight again, boss more and get it all squared up and figured out. Get us on the right step and the right track for what you're here.
So are they gonna be, they'll just be cleaning certain section then?
Essentially, what I'll do with the cleaning, just to give you a broad one, right now, the cleaning, depending on where I sit financially within the budget, what I absolutely will have to have cleaned is ahead of what they're going to camp, if they don't see it. But generally, moving forward after that, we'll do, depending on budget, where we sit, and, and I'll have to really crunch those numbers, we'll do either a third of the town or a fourth of the town every year. So that, no matter what, at the longest, around a four-year rotation, with every single inch of sewer main being cleaned within that four-year period.
I like the plan.
So that's, just so everybody's aware, you know, like you said, we, we put this on here, thinking this eleven thousand dollar, close to twelve thousand dollar number, we're gonna have to sit and talk and figure it out. We got great news with that, and I can just move forward. That's the update on that. Any questions about any of that?
Jeez, that all?
I got one more thing for you. One more, it's a quick one. You know, we talked about the, uh, the possibility of beating the fogger and doing this, and I think we all decided that that's just not gonna work out for us this year. As a budget, and, uh, kind of. is not gonna work out for us this year because of budget and uh kind of talk a lot more, figure some things out, how we're gonna do it. I however, was approached and given a quote from a company that is doing something similar. Not with fogger, but very similar. So I have here in my hand, I have a quote and it's, the price is actually looking pretty good. What they would do is the company would come out, and this is just for, I should preface this, this is just for Pine Tree Park. To see how it's going to work, this sort of application cannot be done citywide, this is more of a manual application versus our fogger that can really help out. This is a good process, the way this is done. Essentially, it would be a, once, once a month, be below and and do all of Pine Tree Park, and we'd be looking at three hundred and seventy-five dollars.
Per month?
Per month, yes, per month, with uh if we wanted to do, because we do have a few little pockets of sand and water out there, which is a little harder to treat, that would be an additional seventy-five dollars. No, this is not including beach. Just Pine Tree Park. If we wanted to include beach, I'm sure that I could easily get another estimate on that.
I think that.
It it was something that I thought, I'm agreeing to the intention of you guys, that you could at least do it now for this year at this price is very minimal to us. And that gives us the time to work on our fogger setup and get it figured out, while still providing a a better service for out there. And it won't take long for word to get around that we're, we're doing this out there. I know, I know some of you can't, it's real nice when there's no mosquitoes. Where's that? Places where they do, places where they do this. Places where they do this.
And uh you have this in your budget?
This is something that I do believe I can work into the budget and it's no problem.
When you say manuals, like a, like a granular?
No, you've got uh, they they use, often will use like a backpack, a blower, mister, um you know, they have hand sprayers, or they have them in the back of, you know, side-by-sides, formulas, things like that, so it's more a contact setup. It it's sprayed, it drops down, it drives very fast, and then upon contact and mosquitoes and whatnot, touch it, they have water. And there there is also, if it's a, if that'd be a lot. If, again, with anything else, if there's torrential rain or wind or anything, you know, there's, there's the ability to people, company have them come and touch it up, and that price isn't the full price. Because that's, just obviously, it was our rain, you know, wind, rain, but you don't try to keep them all forever.
Four hundred bucks a month for months out of the year, the main summer months, even, even July, August.
Yeah, that's, that's really, it'd be, in my opinion, we would probably start this within a week, probably, we did it done before, so it'd be mid-May to mid-September. I I'd say four months total of doing this, and that would be it.
And this is your recommendation?
Yeah, I I would, I I would like to do this, yeah.
Can we advertise like somehow, put it on there on Pine Tree Park Steel and maybe we use steel control?
I would think we could, you know, our website and then on the golf course page on Facebook and, you know, just try to get it out there.
I've had some people ask me why we don't push the campground somewhere else to on our website other than what we do, but it's just I'm assuming on my part, but I mean, a lot of people are asking if the campground was open and it has, and when it opened anyway. We could put it on a big sign, like we have the golf course. I just want to make sure that Pine Tree Park gets like open, even now that, you know, we have the drone, it takes more good pictures in the area, we can actually advertise the control and we can have it to be controlled for mosquitoes too, it will attract more people, that's a permanent, permanent um note about the campground.
Park is open, by the way.
Somebody's camping out.
Yeah, we had uh, I think, three spots this past weekend.
We have about nine people or anyone's coming.
And I would guess that.
Memorial Weekend is booked.
An opener's gotta be quite a few, I think. We do get a lot that just show up.
There will be a lot.
We get a host yet?
No, I I thought I had one, I was talking to her earlier, early spring, and they've chosen not to take that responsibility. First-time campers, they just want to. We'll rent the host site out, we've done it in the past, just charge a little bit more.
And when there's no host, it's just, goes back to my department, spending a little more time out there cleaning, checking off things. We make it work, it would be great to have a host, but the late things are the last year, the two years, everything, please label it.
If you want, because like I said, we've got your local golf course on our board.
Yeah.
We put it on the side.
The help wanted portion.
If we have, golf course is now open, now call for key time, if you can put Pine Tree Park is now open, we can move city hall number.
Yep.
For contact reservation or whatever.
Yeah.
Get it out on the sign.
Take it over some of that stuff with the.
I haven't driven by it for a while, does this still say help wanted a fine side?
Yes.
So is there any way we can change that for help wanted multiple positions available within the city? Appreciate it, so that way it's not just saying that somebody driving by.
Other than most few things, I don't have anything else for you guys, the grass is growing, it started mowing. Summertime business.
It's dry.
It's exceptionally dry. Really dry. Anything, you guys have anything for me or my apartment at all?
Are they gonna be ready for cemetery, for memorial name?
Cemetery just got mowed this morning for the first time. They'll all be mowing again and weed lift and plagues and all that, we need to help out putting those out. Be ready to go?
You can do something on that frost boil?
Which one?
Oscar, Forestry, Rick Store. Yeah, that reminds me, how did that turn out? Which one?
It's dried up a little, um the barricades have been drunken in a little, I'm not quite sure by who, but they have been, so back in to see what happens.
Alright. Thanks, Mike. Jim, you want, uh, or let's see, we're down to, I think, Rick Store.
I really don't have a whole lot, Shonda and I kind of rotated Monday nights now since we're a little short staffed, so I, I draw the straw to be here tonight, she's up working, so trying to do our best to get through it.
Yes, and we need the help, otherwise, even with the governor's okay, we can't reopen our regular hours.
I can.
He did lift it, but we don't have enough staff.
I understand.
To work.
Yeah, so right now, we're gonna stick with hours that we've done. We are doing Friday and Saturday to one, we have enough coverage those nights, but as far as the rest of the week goes right now, without extending our staff more than the shortage we already are, and without putting Shonda and I into too much overtime, we're gonna stick with the limited hours, Monday through Thursday.
Pay incentive didn't work at all yet?
Uh, we have, not yet. We have two new people, but nobody else has really you know, that whole thing, it's been a little bit, it's been a crowd everywhere, so.
Anything else for Barr guys?
You're doing what you're doing.
We're trying to.
Council can help you just ask.
Law enforcement.
Nothing earth-shattering, we have equipment still for more daytime help. So obviously, it's a long time to get that stuff. Once we get that, we'll hopefully uh get a little better coverage on some days. Every department, law enforcement wise, is hurting for people. So we're just gonna see what happens over the next few years. No, nothing earth-shattering, you guys.
No, any luck with the?
Anderson?
Yeah.
Spend some time out there, and of course, no matter what, I'm on the other side of bike cap or on this side, if they see you, when you're there, you know, you're not gonna get it. Like I, like I said, I've spoken with the company in the past, and I started hanging around, things, you know, maybe settled down a little bit, so I don't know, I haven't talked to bike cap, but I would anticipate it's been better. Knows that better than I've been there.
Just to reiterate, if people do see kind of crazy driving, exhibition driving, they report it.
Yeah, I think you have plate number, you'd wonder.
That'd be great.
That would be wonderful, but even if I made, even if I colored them, it would be awesome.
But yeah, to, but if we don't, if nobody calls, then nobody knows.
Do you mean the vehicle's leaving Timberline heading that way, going a hundred miles an hour?
I was, we're talking about was Anderson Fabrics.
Oh. Oh, yeah, there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thing.
It's bad. It's bad.
You live right there, don't you, Don?
Yeah. I mean, you know, we, me and him ride our bikes all over and it's just crazy, you're here.
No, training, if you get specific vehicles, feel free, like you said, to call and and report those vehicles, I can try to follow. I uh told that, I've controlled that split, that section ten times today. You're getting the patrol coverage, I'm telling you, I I, but when they see me, they're not doing those things, so.
Yeah, I know, it's you know, you can't just sit there.
Right. Well, you can, but then they're doing it here. So, you just shuffle around, but complaints are what's important, because I just off the police presence in there, like you said, that area by Anderson's and that road's gotten more traffic by law enforcement lately than it ever have.
Yeah.
And then we're gonna complain about a different section, and then we hit that hard, and you try to stay on it, but again, we don't know if we're not getting the calls, because usually these people aren't doing it front.
And people can call which number?
Eighty-five, four, eight, oh, two, or however you want, that city hall doesn't like that, or is responsible for taking the message, but if they're on the phone, paying a bill, it's on the city hall, let them know and they'll pass it on.
Yeah, that's what I heard. There's a broom Chevy that goes about flower that goes that way all the time.
Alright. Anything from Brian?
No.
Jim? I don't feel. But I think we've already, unless you've got something else new to add.
Yeah. We have irrigation, that's sort of. So I may be ready, irrigation specialist in pole. Just kind of see if you can stack down with some of the problems. It's supposed to kick in when it drops so far, when you find your one, so many trees, it will not kick in when the pressure drops. I don't know if it's pressure switch, if it is. I don't know what's been happening last time, it took us two months to find the pressure switch. Like you said, we was here last time, the system is so antiquated. Arched, which is almost impossible. Then there's a couple other problems we're having out of the field. Only even though it's because he's got a little magic computer, we can plug it into our computer. Thank you, Dan. Is it could just be a little glitch, we wanted to patrol families? Or it could be a broken line out, you know? I don't have that kind of equipment, he's going forward.
But mowers?
Mowers are on work. My young staff on that. Jim, I just have a look at this. Oh, they're really fantastic job. Uncommon, they're pretty effective.
That was one of the huge pieces of the city.
Yeah.
That was on with uh the flame issues and the motor issues.
Yeah, we got the trim motors, trim mower motors.
That was two or three years, you did like?
Oh, they're great, they found so many things.
But there was still issues, it wasn't solving the problem, so.
That's the problem, when you don't buy something. You know, we ought to go with, um but yeah, the motor is everything.
The golf carts are still up to par?
Yeah, all of them running except for one.
Any more rentals, or are we sitting about the same?
Our rentals?
Storage.
Storage rentals, I'm not taking any rentals, current storage rentals.
That one part, well, it's just in the range.
Have received some really good comments on the course and the staff, we have the staff in the clubhouse. Some really nice comments about Pam and Dick and um the shape of the course that Jim and his staff has put the course in at this point. A well recovered from winter.
We lost it in spots.
Get a few warm showers. Alright, um.
I'm hoping that the state for the local meeting is accurate, this is on my calendar, it's next.
The what?
The Black Tech Library Board Meeting, I think that sounds right. Okay.
Next two days before the uh.
Okay.
So hopefully we'll find something else.
Money? Yeah, that would be great.
Because we've been contacted about the building. Hey Christina?
Up to me?
Yeah.
Well, Todd's been waiting very patiently. Can you hear me?
I can, thanks Christina for fixing this, it sounds great, am I coming in?
Uh, I'm gonna let you take over on the sale day report, and I'll sign in when I need to.
Yep, yep, great. Yep, great, it was a great day to sell bonds, very active today, Mondays are are pretty, pretty busy, but May 10th was huge, so. So we got you in early, bids came in for Black Duck at 9:30 this morning, so you were the, I think, one of the first ones out of the chute, and I think that helped a little bit. So we'll go over the rating report just a little bit too, but I wanted to cut to the chase on the bond issue, so we remember that. Some liquor store funds are going into this as a cash contribution for the improvements to the liquor store, the municipal liquor store. So. So we did get four bids up to 9:30 this morning. And Northland Securities out of Minneapolis, you know, went in with DA Davidson. At 1.89%. So that's pretty cheap money for 20 years. And that was. About 0.10% less, you know, 10 basis points less than our pre-sale report earlier to you folks, so. So we saved a little bit of money here today, and that's great. So the second bid was Bernardi Securities out of Chicago. And at a 2.02% and United Bankers Bank. They're on the corner down here in Bloomington, the corner of 494 and 35W. And they came in at 2.04%. And Collier Securities out of Minneapolis came in at 2.29, so the first three. Any one of those would have been great, Collier's, the last bid was a little high. But we're not gonna take them, right, so Northland Securities is our, is our winner at 1.89%. So you know, the difference between the two bids, the high and the low is 30,000 and some change there for interest costs, so. You know, it pays to send this out to the wolves and see what we get, so it's, that's great. So you did maintain your A rating stable outlook too, by the way. So that was, that was good news. We did go back. Quite a ways, you hadn't been rated in a while, so Christina had, you know, we had to get a bunch of information to Standard and Porers. Few weeks ahead of the bond sale, like, you know, your audits that went back to 2017 and year end 2020, and I see you got your, your 2020 audit this evening, so we will include that in the final. Offering document here, the final official statement. So folks have a chance to take a look at that fresh information, and then we talked about your economic outlook, so. So things look pretty, pretty status quo. One thing we just, you know, there's a rating report is attached to the sale day report. And, and so Christina did a nice job in giving the analysts at Standard and Porers some additional information on the liquor store. Cash flow that helped clarify your liquidity and available fund balance as a percentage of your budget. Because we are tapping into that a little bit, but it does, you know, continue to, you know, grow, right, as we, as we pull from there, and hopefully after. July 1, right, we can all, you know, burn our masks and, you know, start whooping it up again for the summer, we'll see. But, but, but she did mention that, you know, you're a weaker A, you know, you're a smaller sized city. And so what really helps Black Duck is, is to maintain at least $500,000 in available fund balance. And that could be any, you know, that could be a combination of general fund and liquor store fund. They don't like to include the water and sewer funds because they have their own operations, but anything that's available for operations that the council can get their hands on. And $500,000 for the size of, city the size of Black Duck is kind of your sweet spot, so. I think, you know, we're all gonna work hard to, to try to maintain that level, it can go down a little bit, you know, up is good. But you just want to make sure that we sort of maintain that, I also want to make sure the council knew that, kind of what you're, what you're looking at, you know, so the larger sized city. Like Bemidji, for example, would probably score more points with that available fund balance in between 70 and 75%. And so that's a lot for those folks. But the larger your city is, the more, it's more of a percentage than it is a dollar amount. So just keep that in mind as, you know, that's something to kind of keep, keep in the, in your back pocket, just to. Always remember that, that's a good threshold to stay at if we can, and again, it can go down a little bit with the way the cash flows are in the liquor store and. General funds gotta kind of pull some money every once in a while, but. But, you know, to kind of keep it, at least policy wise, at, at that level would be great. And then, you know, this, this bond, of course, is a tax abatement bond and basically payable from. A tax levy or property taxes of the city, but it's gonna be, you know, canceled every year by available liquor store revenue, so that's the idea, but it keeps it also flexible for the city and. So we can use funds from other sources is what I'm saying, so. So that'll keep the bond paid, right, and that's a good thing for the rating as well. The bond will close on May 27, you know, we'll get all the money then and get wired to you. Closing is just electronic by email and all that good stuff and wire transfer, so it should go pretty smooth between now and the 27th. For you, that's part of our job is to keep it, keep it simple for you and, and we'll keep the complexities over here with the bond attorney and, and the, and the. And the underwriter, Northland Securities have bought the bond, so. So again, attached to this bond sale report is the bid tabulation, you can look at that. Final sources and uses and the bond payment, it's all fixed rate on, on this, so it's not gonna change unless we refinance it. Sometime the rating report is attached, you guys can take a look at it. Later if you want, and then the bond buyer graph, the 30-year bond buyer graph, you can see that rates are ticking down again. So you kind of hit it nice today. Quite a few of our cities did, and they saw a nice result today of, of lower interest rates than what we had estimated. And then. The city's action then tonight is to consider the bond resolution that awards the sale of the bonds. To Northland Securities, and then it sets forth, you know, your covenants and things that you have to, you know, abide by in that resolution. And that's, that's what you would be voting on tonight if you so choose to, and I'll just yield to the council for questions, but it's been a, it's been a, a long road, you know, we had. Tax abatement hearings and, and bids coming in and, and good planning from staff and council and architecture and everything, so. Looks like, you know, we got good rates on the loan, so to speak here, and, and so I'm kind of excited for you guys to get going with the project, hope it works out well for you, but. I'll, I'll yield to the council for any questions.
Todd, I have one question, and that's just in order of the, the council's approval tonight's on the agenda, when we spoke earlier today, I. I put your sale day report, your proposal form and form in your voting sheet prior to the resolution sale for them to vote on. It appears as though there's gotta be an action on the proposal form and the voting sheet is what is tracked. Is that correct?
Nope, the voting sheet is to keep track of the resolution you mentioned. And so you'll send that back to me so we can fill it in, you know, and then the proposal form. That action is, is in like the first few paragraphs of the resolution. And then so that can be signed by you and the mayor then after, after you consider award that resolution, yep.
Very good.
Yep.
There's no action, okay? But we've moved to B. Administrator for act.
Yep, the resolution approves, approves this bond sale, and so I present ahead of the resolution. To fill in any blanks that are there and everything, so you folks feel comfortable that, you know, you're kind of seeing a nice summary of what's sort of embedded in that resolution. Yep.
I just want to make sure I have all, I have a lot of tabs. Signed, so I want to make sure.
Right.
Appropriately.
Yep, I just need to walk away, if you can, you know, not tonight, but you know, after your meeting, if you could just. PDF, you know, take a copy of it, email me the signed proposal form, and then that, that info, that voting sheet, then, then we can get moving on it this mo, or tomorrow morning, yep.
Thank you.
Yep.
It would be B.
The resolution draft.
That is correct. And I've got it all spelled out there, so the motion can be in the form of the way B is stated. There is no number. If you look at that document on the first page, the resolution accepting offer and sale of. The language is on the first page right underneath the obstruction.
A motion to accept the. Offer of the sale of $650,000 general obligation tax abatement bond.
Yes, please.
Series 2021A provided for the insurance, I'm sorry, the issuance and legend tax abatements and levying a tax for the spring payments therefore.
There.
Motion, right, second. Take that second, we have any further discussion on this? All in favor? I opposed. None, passes.
Great, thanks again for the business and all your help, and next one we have then would be the. For the, for coming up would be that Public Works, Public Safety Building, and we'll see what, see what transpires in the next few weeks on that one, so thanks so much.
Thank you.
Thanks Todd for hanging out.
Yep, you bet. Bye bye.
Good night. Yep, so Steve is also here, I'll get the kickoff on this, so what the council is reviewing or see. Is the standard form agreement between the city of Black Duck and Cross Anderson Construction Project on additional modeling. This, one, well, there's two copies here, but they won't be signed. After that is done, D in conjunction with that will approve the notice to proceed. On with Cross Anderson as the contractor for that project. So these actually need two separate motions.
Okay, now your motion to approve the notice to proceed.
Now, do the contract first.
You want the contract first?
Yes, please, do C first.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I need the contract.
I'm motion to approve the standard form of agreement between Black Duck and Cross Anderson.
Second motion.
Motion and second, any discussion? All in favor? I opposed. Contractor, contract. And E.
So the notice proceed document you will. Sign and, or excuse me, you will motion to approve authorizing Cross Anderson to begin the project.
What's that?
You got the money, honey.
Did I get a motion? For the notice to proceed.
Motion to approve the. Notice to proceed to Cross Anderson.
Motion, do I have a second? Second, any further discussion? All in favor? I opposed. Get that done.
Do you have anything else you want to add?
You said that exactly correct. Only thing beyond that is we're having a pre-construction meeting on Wednesday. And that's when we will hand over that contract with the signature and that notice to proceed. We've received all the information from Cross Anderson that we've requested. All good, right, so all's good.
April 12.
May 12, and I do have that on, on the bottom here too, excellent touch on that as well. Alright, so. Alright.
I gotta see it here, and I write it there, and I'm gonna put it on my calendar, and I'll forget it's in my phone.
I give those little reminders. Um, okay, so E was a council requested information, so I crunched the numbers. This is for both the pond remodel in addition, as well as the Public Works Police Facility. The council at the last work session had requested a summary of what has been paid to date. What I provided to you is two spreadsheets, one for each project, so that you can see what the commitment. Was to be as in addition to what has been spent, so I'll just kind of go through the pond really quick because. That's the easier of the two. Obviously, we all know that we've committed $150,000 of cash contributions from the liquor store for this country, for this project. We also know that the bid from Cross Anderson came below the 650 estimated. Project costs, so we have a little give there, that's good. The details I provided on the spreadsheet make up items that have already been spent. And some estimated costs that we've already received from vendors that would be our contribution to the project. Including having Paul and the Communications come in, reroute all the down lines. Arvin still needs to come and provide a security system update for the liquor store, adding additional. Surveillance cameras and entrance area security, I don't have that number yet.
I did speak, I did speak with him, they got come down. Last week, I believe, and I talked with Arvin.
I figured I'd get a paper copy of some sort.
He was going to go back and crunch some numbers and give us something, probably give him Shonda and our, our, our email, I have not heard anything, but.
Hopefully that'll come.
Somebody has stopped down, and I have discussed with him what are, looking forward to.
Okay, great. Um, I listed the kitchen equipment from Reinhardt's on there. Any of the public notices from the bidding system, bidding timeframe that the city's already paid for. Furniture, furniture and fixtures for off sale, we haven't quoted yet, we have a rough estimate on an POS system. For the on sale and potentially the off sale. Shonda and I have been working with three different vendors, trying to find out which is going to be the best point of sale system to move into if we chose to. We may be eliminating the existing system that kicks through both sides and trying to move forward with one. That not, that doesn't just specialize in inventory, but can specialize in a restaurant version of. A much better way to track inventory, but also customers. So that's just one estimate that I have listed. Now, the three highlighted items on this spreadsheet are items that have already been spent, like I told you, the boring, obviously, for the land where the addition's gonna be. But also the architecture and engineering fees that have been paid to Woodsef to date. And I can report to you that. What we've paid is what we're going to pay, and we shouldn't be paying Steve anymore. Sorry, Steve.
Oh, I know, I'm working for free from here on out.
I know.
That's the way it goes sometimes.
Yeah. Is there, do you guys have any questions on the pond remodel, obviously, this is not inclusive, but this is the best I can present and provide to the council.
Well, that's kind of what I think you were looking for, right, Jason?
Yeah.
Okay, very good.
I just wanted to make sure that there wasn't any hidden piece that we didn't know of.
Understood.
That we knew were gonna come up.
I basically took what came out of that, that committee that created and worked on the whole project to find the remodel and the listing that Steve had provided of things that would be city. Outside of what he's provided and estimated or outside the building, so that we can get the bonding. That's where I got this. Okay, on the Public Works and Police Facility spreadsheet, it's a little more complicated, and that's because this process is going to take a lot longer. And. There's a lot more involved, so. I additionally provided the preliminary, preliminary architect's feasibility report with this spreadsheet for the council to review, this is a report that Steve. Myself and Angela from USDA had to provide to USDA on this project, listing all of the city contributions. As well as what is going to be bonded for with the USDA loan. In the same respect as the. Pond project, the yellow highlighted items are what has been paid to those vendors to date, we paid Ron for their boring, and we paid Woodsef $190,000 for this project. If you remember, when we committed to the contract with Woodsef for this project, the engineering and architecture fee. If you remember, when we committed to the contract with Witsup for this project, the engineering and architecture fees were about $169,000. We're not quite fully there yet, but we're very close. Any questions so far? Okay, the additional items listed are quotes that we've already received or we've estimated based on things that were going to be city responsibility. Data lines and wifi lines from Paul Benyon into this facility, office furniture, break room furnishings, evidence storage shelving. I'm going to skip over the orange portion, appliances, window coverings, the contingencies, cost of issuance and the bond, which would be rolled into the financing itself. On the orange portion, those three items have been removed from this particular document. Because as I stated in the previous work session, the city would be applying for a community facilities grant loan to pay for those big pieces of equipment so that they can be put into the project or into the, the facility then. Any questions? Comprehensive enough?
Next phase, USDA.
Well, we have one loan, a resolution that needs to be approved, which is my next item on, underneath me. After that is done, then Angela can send everything to her general attorney for review. And then we'll be able to report with the next step of bidding. I don't know how many weeks we are away on that yet. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay. I know. You know what? Remember a few months ago when I said I really wanted to bid both these projects together? I'm really glad we didn't do that. This has been so, so much time consuming.
So are you going to be, are you building a new lease apartment?
It'll be a combination of public works, police facility.
Oh.
So about 30% of the building will house the police department, and the other 60, 70% will be public.
And this is going to be built.
On, at the end of Industrial Boulevard, north of Andersonson's in Bytown. Where those softball fields are.
Play in the both, we're going to be using the same road.
Baseball field.
Oh, out there.
Yeah.
Oh.
That's Anderson.
Oh.
Right next to the water treatment.
Oh, oh.
Yeah, I know, it makes almost crazy to put the Zen public works guys out by the water treatment plant.
Well, no, but there is, why, isn't there a lift station there?
Yep.
Yeah, yeah.
Lift station and water plant as well.
Well, that's, yeah, okay.
An existing facilities, those entities have been working on over 60, 70 plus. Yeah, and the, and the police departments in a building from 1940.
Yeah, it's a.
The roof's been failing for years.
That's why it makes lots of.
Favorite part was the conclusions and recommendations on the proposal. It was an excellent paragraph, and it was beautifully written.
This one? Yeah.
I just wanted to get up to speed on this.
Absolutely.
Go free.
Any other questions that was requested?
No.
No.
Good. Okay, thank you. I will move on to F then, if you're okay with that. This loan resolution will authorize the indebtedness for this project that we just got done talking about for the combined maintenance and police facility with USDA. I need a motion on this, please, next.
Resolution authorizing.
Yeah, I've pretty much taken it out of the context of the document and put it in the agenda, so it was easier for you guys. Move on, yes, please.
All right. I'll make the motion for the loan resolution authorizing and providing for the terms of indebtedness for the, for this, providing a portion of the cost of construction. It's combined maintenance and police facility with USDA.
No, no, you did fine.
I have the motion, do I have a second?
One second.
Seconds. Any further discussion about this?
No questions.
All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I've included underneath myself the revised resolution or the resolution 2021-01 for the appointments and designations. Since Don has already been sworn in today, if you wish to do it tonight, you may, if you wish to put it off until a work session, I'm arguing. Want to table it? We'll table it.
We can, we will table that for now, and we'll let Don peruse the.
Yeah.
The list of all the appointments, so that, because we're going to plug your name in there somewhere.
The more you say no, the more bored you get on. Found it out.
All right, then I will move on to some key dates coming up in the next month. As Stephen noted, May 12th at 10:00 AM is the pre-construction meeting with Cross Anderson Construction, and that is going to be located at the pond. May 12th at 11:00 AM is also the next development core meeting here at City Hall. Yeah, are you going to be there since Sheldon is not here?
Yeah.
Sounds good. I, and it'll probably run a little late just because the pre-construction meeting's at 10:00. I don't know how long those usually last, Steve.
Hour, hour and a half.
Right on time is what you're supposed to say.
Yeah. Hopefully not too long. Moving down the list, on May 19th at noon is the next chamber meeting, and that's going to be held at Restaurant 71. Also on the 19th at 2:00 PM is the next planning commission meeting located here at City Hall. May 24th would be your next scheduled work session of the City Council at 6:00 PM. May 31st is Memorial Day, and observed, and as it is observed, Black Duck City Hall is closed. And June 7th at 6:00 PM is the next scheduled City Council meeting also at 6:00. Does the council have any concerns, questions, or anything else that I need to address?
Yes, you're good.
Perfect. You can go through your mayor reports, and then we can go through community events, because I see Cindy's online for your proclamation, Mr. Mayor.
Well, we can, let's see, she's online, sitting there, we can just do a proclamation or anything like that.
Okay. Cindy, can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Oh, God. I'm not going to like walk away or anything.
No, see, can someone take a picture who's there, of him signing the proclamation and send it to my email?
Of course.
Thank you.
Yep. Do you want to stand up and read it aloud?
I will stand up and read this out loud.
All right, awesome.
Awesome.
As mayor of the city of Black Duck, Minnesota, I Maxwell Led proclaim the week of May 16th through the 22nd, Leafy Greens Week in the city of Black Duck. The purpose of this proclamation is to bring the community together by one vegetable, one community. Proclamation highlights Leafy Greens as the 2021 Bell Franny County Vegetable of the Year. This proclamation will help promote local foods, healthy eating and gardening in the Black Duck community by educating our elementary students and encourages residents to use the community gardens. The proclamation highlights one vegetable, one community, bringing the community together in conversation about our food and highlights. All it has done for the city of Black Duck by distributing packages of seeds to the Black Duck Library, Resource Center, and the Black Duck Sanford Plant. Probably proclaim this 10th day of May, 2021.
Thank, thank you, thank you very much for doing that, appreciate it.
And actually, I don't know how many years we've been doing this, but.
I heard it on the radio.
Yep. Do you want me to go through the rest of the community?
Yes.
We're in there?
Yep, we're there.
On May 15th is the Black Duck Chamber of Commerce Citywide Garage Sale. The time has passed to getting on the map, I'm already putting it out on the Facebook page, so it's out there. We have about, maybe about eight. I want to say eight garage sales sign up. On May 15th is also State of Minnesota Peace Officers Memorial Day. It's a day to thank your law enforcement. May, May 22nd from 8:00 AM to 10:00 AM is also the Citywide Cleanup Day. We are still taking registrations for that, so if you're interested, please call City Hall, let us know what your address is and what you have to pick up. We have a number of anniversaries from our employees in May. It was a good year, or a good month, excuse me, to sign up fire department volunteers that month. Rudy Patch, Leo Gross, Fletcher Kuchon, Matt Landis, Andy Tinas, Don Anderson are all celebrating their anniversaries of fire department this year. Chris Brown and Ray Bremermeister are also celebrating their anniversaries this month working for the city. And Shonda is also celebrating her anniversary this year as well. Everybody.
Yeah, Cindy, the council, does anybody want to report?
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, do I have a second? Favor?
Aye.
Aye. Your turn.